Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club's study session for September 3rd, 2025. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send us an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com. Okay, so we're gonna talk about some match equity calculations today. And so the warning is that there is some math that we are going to have to do. It's kind of unavoidable if you really want to get to learning this stuff. You can do a lot of this stuff without really crunching some numbers. But at some point, I do want to go through an example where there's, you know, you're gonna have to calculate a lot of things. One question that I get about this stuff is, do players actually do this kind of stuff over the board? Uh, the answer is no and yes. Um, it it kind of depends on the players and it kind of depends on some of your methodology. Um, I can tell you for sure that a lot of this stuff I actually do over the board. Um, I'm still not, you know, a hundred percent good at every aspect of it. But I'm making an effort to do it. And so the calculations that you're going to see, yes, a lot of them I'm going to do over the board. Um, and i- if they're gonna seem sort of daunting at first, it it takes a lot of practice really to to be able to to get good at this stuff. Okay, uh, the. I I also want to say that, you know, stop me anytime. You got questions about anything? You know, I I've I've got a few things that I I want to uh to show. Um, but I don't really have that much of an agenda here. I've got a few examples I want us to work through to calculate some some take points. Okay, and I I for the first time in a while, I actually did a little bit of preparation for this. I wrote out some notes so that I could try to have it all a little bit coherent. Okay, so the basic thing I think we ought to talk about is, you know, we need to talk about take point. And I think a lot of people know that take point in backgammon, twenty-five percent. If you can win twenty-five percent of the time, then you should be, you should take the cube. And I want to show you two ways that we can calculate this twenty-five percent. And one thing is, let's put out a caveat. I'm going to ignore two things today. One, I want to ignore gammons. And I want to ignore the value of of holding the cube. And if we ignore gammons and we ignore the value of holding the cube, then twenty-five percent is the correct number.
Jason, have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I I'm gonna make it hopefully a relevant question and I'm not a dumbass. Twenty-five percent is the calculation always in a money game? Is that true?
In a money game, if you ignore gammons and you ignore the value of holding the cube.
Okay, it never changed. So that's why our basis is always a money game. And then if you're playing a match, you then adjust that twenty-five percent.
That's right, and that's right, and we're gonna, we're gonna do some of those calculations to see how to do that adjustment.
I'll get my shoes off. I'll get my shoes off.
Yeah, yeah, get your running shoes on. Okay, so let's calculate this twenty-five percent and let's do it in two ways. Okay, the first way is the main formula that we're gonna use for calculating a take point, which is your take point is risk divided by risk plus gain. All right. If you're, if you're in the process of writing something down, I would say, write this down. Take point equals risk over risk plus gain, because this is the formula that we're gonna use um everywhere today. Okay, so let's say we're in an unlimited game. Or a money game, whatever you want to call it. We're playing for one taco a point, one dollar a point, whatever. Okay, so the way that we're gonna do this take point calculation is we're going to say, what if we take the cube? So we're gonna, we're gonna see this twenty-five percent take point. What if we take and we win? Then we get plus two, right? And what if we pass? We pass. We will just lose one point. And what if we take and we lose? Then it's minus two. This all making sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so now how do we figure out what is our gain? So gain is going to be the difference between these two numbers. That's what you gain when you take the cube and you win. So it's two minus negative one, which is three. That's the difference between winning two points and losing one point. What's the risk when you take the cube? The risk is the difference between the numbers here, the negative one and the negative two. So you can say that the risk is the difference between those. That's one. This is okay?
Yeah.
Okay, now let's calculate the take point. Your take point is risk over risk plus gain. Your risk was one. And your gain was three, so your take point is one over four. One over four, that's twenty-five percent. All right, so that's one way of calculating this take point for an unlimited game or a money game.
This formula is of no use in deciding when the the offer point rate only the take.
That's right. Um, and and in fact, that is, you know, if if we're gonna do be theoretical about it, that's much more complicated. Because it involves more things like, uh, not just your winning percentage, but how volatile the position is. And so I'm not in a position to really discuss that. Now, there is a calculation that can be done with match equity calculations about what is your minimum doubling point? Uh, I don't want to talk about that today, but that's all part of this. Okay.
But but may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead. Everybody should feel free to ask anything.
Yeah, clearly, I agree with the twenty-five percent, but when you are across the board playing and you look at your position, how can you determine I have more than twenty-five percent except by intuition?
Your intuition will mean a lot. Um, so this is where you have to play a lot of backgammon and and know what kind of positions are good for you, what kind of positions are bad for you. Uh, knowing reference positions to say, okay, this in this particular position, I know that I've seen this position before, um, and this this position was a take. But uh, but it's actually not exactly the that position. Sometime, it's actually a little bit better for me. So now I know that this is gonna be a take. So things like that. So here's where reference positions are important.
Yeah.
There are, of course, there are uh endgame positions where you can exactly calculate your winning chances. Uh, we'll, we'll get to something like that.
Uh, I have a comment to make about that. So when you play a lot of against XG or any engine and you start looking at positions and and you look at the position and you see the percentage chance of you winning and the opponent winning. And you do that that over thousands of times, you start to get like an intuitive sense of the percentages. Yeah, so it's it comes with experience.
That's right. And this is where, you know, uh, thousands of games of backgammon really start to matter. And 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 I think Eric's point is is really a good one, that when you look at a position in XG, it's important not to just look at the equities, but to look at the winning chances and the gaming chances so that you can familiarize yourself with, okay, this type of position. I know it's in kind of always in the thirties and winning percentage, stuff like that. Okay, now, all right, if if this wasn't mathematical enough for you, I want to take a different approach to deriving this twenty-five percent winning chance. I can see a smile on Rick's face. Okay, so how do we find this twenty-five percent? So I can ask a different appro- okay, so different approach. Which is not going to use this formula. It it's it's a more uh mathematical derivation. So I can say, what are our expected winnings? If we take a cube and our winning probability is P. Okay, so, well, when you take a cube with probability P, you're gonna win two points. And with probability one minus P, you're going to lose two points. Okay, if I do the algebra on this, sorry, I have to do math. Two P minus two plus two P, this comes out to four P minus two. All right, so when are we supposed to take? We should take whenever E is bigger than negative one. Because negative one means you've passed the cube and you've lost a point. So that means four P minus two needs to be bigger than negative one. And if you solve this inequality, you're gonna get P has to be bigger than one over four. And I know this is the derivation Rick's been looking for. So it's the, it's the same sort of idea, but just looked at it from a different point of view. Okay, so I'm not gonna do anything like this anymore. This is, this was just a sidebar. I'm gonna stick with this calculation. Take point equals risk over risk plus gain. Okay.
You can also do it the brute force way, where you imagine, oh, what if I play this a thousand times betting a dollar each? Yes, I'm gonna win uh uh two hundred and fifty games uh worth uh two dollars for me, but then I'm gonna lose a hundred, like uh seven hundred and fifty games where where pass or whatever. So you have to like figure out in terms of dollar and you can also.
Right, yes, and.
Hey, Jason, to Eric's point.
That's kind of what I did here, but Eric, your your thought process about looking at it from that point of view can really help people to understand, uh, rather than trying to, you know, uh, brute force it with algebra like this.
Yeah, Jason, to Eric's point, that's the only way I ever understood it. Okay, great. Okay, look, I've played eight games. Cause it's divisible by, right, the twenty-five percent easily.
Right, yeah.
Play eight games and in game one, you pass the cube. This game, you lose the game, you lose the game or.
Yeah.
Anyway, only then did I discover, okay, now I know how we got to twenty-five percent.
Right, yeah.
Because I I went to school in New York and I I think I got a seventy percent on the algebra Regents exam in ninth grade. And that was fifty years ago.
Okay, good. So so this idea, we'll we'll call this idea that Eric and and Bill are talking about. This is sort of the third idea, which is think about this from a long run point of view.
May I say something? Uh, uh, I I hear that. And that could work if in the con- after you make your correct decision at the cube and then in the continuation of the game, you make no mistake and your opponent makes no mistakes. So all you, all that comes into play is the cube decision, so you isolate that. But in reality, you will make some other mistake during, you know, three or four or five rolls from there and your opponent might make another mistake. So there will be other elements that will come into play. There will not be just the cube decision.
Okay, so this is a really important concept that Donald is talking about, uh, which is the difficulty of the of how to play the position. So first of all, yes, this is a theoretical calculation based on this idea that both sides are gonna play perfectly to the end. Which, I don't know, if you've seen me play backgammon, it's not a very good assumption. I am going to make mistakes in every game that I play. Um. One of the things you can do is you can say, well, in general, these mistakes are gonna cancel each other out, right? I'm gonna make mistakes, you're gonna make mistakes. They're gonna kind of cancel each other out on average. Okay, then you might say, well, hang on, they're not always gonna cancel themselves out. What if I'm playing mochi? Mochi's not gonna make mistakes. I'm gonna make mistakes. So if I go up against mochi, then I'm gonna start doing things like, well, I think I need to uh, I need to consider this as, you know, my winning chances maybe not not as good as I think. On the other hand, if I'm playing a match against mochi, I think if I don't want to get behind in a match, uh, my chances of coming back are are really slim. So a lot of these things are are considerations. And finally, you can have a position where one side has to make really difficult decisions to play it out and the other side is basically on autopilot. Well, that's going to change things because the the side that has to make difficult decisions is probably going to lose equity on the way, whereas the side that's on autopilot is not going to. They can just make their moves automatically. Containment games are like that. Let's say you have one checker that you're trying to get home. Well, you you're on autopilot. You're just gonna try to move your checker home. The other side, though, has to make difficult plays to try to figure out how to contain your checker and is very likely to make a mistake. Okay, now, I'm gonna give you a rule of, I want to talk about match play now. Because match play is more fun. I'm gonna give you a rule of thumb. Which is, when you're ahead in the match, you're less likely to take than in a money game. When you're behind in the match, you're more likely to take and in a money game. Okay, what do you think about this as a rule of thumb?
But by likely, you mean you should?
You should, yeah.
You should, that's what you mean by like.
Yeah, so maybe uh to be more specific about this, when I say less likely to take, uh, you have a higher take point.
Yeah.
And more likely to take, you have a lower take point.
And that is dramatically true at the score of four away, two away. Which is, uh, which I sent a position about this in this week's uh Mid-Atlantic uh email newsletter. Yeah, so that's a very interesting position, because it would never in a thousand years be a double for money, but it is in a faraway two away.
Okay, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I I I do want to point out that in the position that you're talking about, the main reason is because of gammons. And today, I don't really want to talk about gammons. Uh, because that that makes the situation a little bit more complicated. I'm not saying we we're going to ignore it completely, because you can't ignore it completely. Gammons are super important. And that's probably a topic for another day. Um, I'm just kind of in the business of talking about take points right now. Okay, um. I haven't had anybody say yes, whether or not they believe this as a good rule of thumb.
It's generally true.
Generally or always?
Okay, probably always true. Let me think. I hate hard rules, because you always find an exception.
Uh, okay, now remember, I'm I'm just ignore, I'm ignoring gammons and I'm ignoring re-cube value right now, so all of that's out.
I mean, yeah, when you're behind, when you're behind, you should be more aggressive. So you should take, you should take suit, you should take sooner.
Well, well, I think aggressiveness is on the doubling. If you're behind, you might want to be aggressive in doubling.
Let's not worry about that. Let's just talk about take points right now.
Okay, I recall reading that if the position is not gammonish, then you double pretty much the same as in money game. It it is when gammons count that this becomes true, that when you're behind, you want to cube more often or not. So that's what I remember reading.
All right, I'm glad I asked this question. Uh, because the last few statements were generally speaking wrong. This rule of thumb is generally true, not always true. There are some notable exceptions, which we'll get to. It's it's not a bad rule of thumb to apply when there's a lot of points to go, you know? Like, uh, by a lot, I mean like, you know, more than five points to go to winning the match. It's a pretty good rule of thumb, but there are some weird things that can happen. So I'm gonna say, this is not bad, but there are notable exceptions. And they can be dramatic. That is, things can happen that feel very counterintuitive. Okay, time to show you a new thing here, which is the match equity table. All right, so I'm gonna try to keep this on the screen. So this is, this is a match equity table. This is sort of the bread and butter of what we're gonna have to be working with uh in a lot of these calculations. Okay, so let's talk about how to read this. So when you go searching for a match equity table, you will find tables like this. Match equity table, so this is a term to be looking for.
Is this the Neil Kazarov?
Yeah, this is, this right here is the Kazarov-Warrackwell match equity table to two significant figures. This gives you your approximate chance of winning the match when you have this many points to go. So for instance, this forty right here tells you that when you're three away and your opponent is two away, you have approximately a forty percent chance of winning the match. This, of course, depends on the strengths of the players, right? If I'm playing somebody who's much better than me and I'm behind three away, two away, then my actual match winning chances are probably a little bit lower than forty percent. Not a lot lower, but a little bit. So we're gonna make some assumptions. One assumption is that the players involved are of equal skill.
To within a very small margin of error, looks like it's just basically the ratio of number of points to go. Small adjustment.
Yeah, it's not bad. It's not a bad, uh, uh, there there are, there are some nice formulas out there that can approximate the match equity table. Um, and for instance, I use something called Neil's numbers. That will, you know, if you, what if you will need to know what is your match equity at eleven away, seven away? Okay, I don't have the match equity table memorized out to eleven, but I do know Neil's numbers. Um, that will give you a pretty good approximation. And Neil's numbers are not very hard to use. Okay, so again, reading the match equity table, so if I'm, uh, so I'm gonna write it like this, three away, two away, forty percent. So when I write like this, I'm saying that my player is three away and the, so me, I'm three away. My opponent is two away, so that means I have a forty percent chance of winning the match.
Um, Rich, your insight of, that is, the ratio of the numbers just blew my mind. I think it's gonna make it much easier to to memorize the table now.
Eric, let me suggest you you look up Neil's numbers. This is a, this is uh, was a big deal for me just a few years ago when I started incorporating Neil's numbers into play.
When you say the ratio of the numbers, what do you mean? Which number?
For for example, a one, a one away, far away, okay, one away, far away. If you assume that the sum of the numbers, so one plus four is five, right?
Yeah.
How much does four represent out of five? Four fifths is eighty percent. But it's eighty-one percent in the table, so there's a small margin of difference, but it's uh.
It's not, it's a good first approximation.
Yeah, so one, a one away, three away, so one plus three is four. Three is three fourths, so three out of four, so that's seventy-five percent, no? So uh you sum both of them and you see how much the top number represents and that's the your.
And by the way, it's not, it's not a coincidence. I mean, this uh, this is something that comes out of mathematics from something called random walks. This is, you can think of this as like a simple random walk. Backgammon is more complicated than that, because you can win gammons, you have the doubling cube. Uh, but it's not bad as a first approximation. Okay, how about we do a calculation involving what is the take point at three away, three away? Okay, so we're, I want to do a bunch of calculations like this. All right, and we're gonna use the the formula that I've talked about. Take point is equal to risk. And I'm gonna abbreviate this, risk over risk plus gain. Okay, so let's say we're at three away, three away. We're gonna take and win. What is our match equity when we take and win?
Uh, well, you go from three away, three away to to one away, three away.
Yeah.
So you go from fifty percent to seventy-five percent.
Okay, we'll be at seventy-five percent. And what's our match equity when we pass?
Yeah, well.
Three, three versus two. Forty percent.
Okay, forty percent. And what if we take and lose?
Then it's gonna be.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, yeah.
Um, Jason, I suggest using uh like three A and two A instead of minus three, three and minus two, because it might confuse us with being like actual negative numbers.
Uh huh.
Uh, I think using A is is more clear.
All right, let's do that then.
I know, you don't have to like retroactively correct everything, it's gonna take a while, but, yeah. Okay, thanks, yeah.
Okay, uh, what is our gain?
Um.
It's the risk.
Gain is the difference between these two numbers.
Oh, yeah, so it is twenty, thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent. What is our risk?
Is fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. So our take point is fifteen divided by fifteen plus thirty-five, which is fifteen over fifty? Thirty percent.
Could you go over that again? How do you get the gain and the and the risk?
Gain. Yeah, the gain is defined to be the difference between taking and winning and passing. It's what you stand to gain by taking the cube.
Okay.
Versus, or always gonna be comparing with passing, right? You always have the option to pass, right? You can say, you know what, I give up on this game. And so your gain is what you gain by, instead of passing, you take the cube and you win.
Yeah.
Your risk is the difference between passing and taking the cube and losing.
Fifteen, yeah.
Okay, so your risk is forty minus twenty-five, which is fifteen. So here, let's put this, this is forty minus five, that's fifteen. Your gain is seventy-five minus forty, so that's thirty-five percent. So your take point is thirty percent. All right, what do you do with this information?
Um, you adjusted relative to what you know from money games. So if the money game take point is twenty-two percent, uh, which you, well, let's pretend it's twenty-five for them.
I want to do twenty-five because I want to ignore re-cubes.
Okay, yeah. Uh, then you think, uh, it's a little bit higher than for money. So I can, I have to be a little bit better than for money to take this cube.
Okay, so if you have a position, which is borderline take pass for money, then at three away, three away, you would pass. All right, are you ready to see a position that will illustrate this?
Sure.
Talk about actual backgammon positions. Okay, uh, let's see, like, okay, all right, here we go. Okay, so this is a pretty typical looking holding game. Uh, let's look at the cube. Okay, so this is a borderline pass for uh for money. So, okay, so right now I have, I have unlimited games uh checked off. Okay, so this is, this is a borderline pass. Now, one reason is is gammons are involved, so you know, maybe it's not a great example, but we're gonna, we're gonna see just how changing this to three away, three away affects this. All right, so you have this in mind, you got this position, this is borderline pass for money. Let's change it to three away, three away. So you can see the score now. It's three away, three away. Now let's look at what this is. What what are we expecting?
That it's a pass now.
They're pass.
Big pass. In fact, that's exactly what it is. Okay, now you could be concerned about the effects of gammons with this, so let me show you another position. Okay, there are no gammons involved here, right? This is, this is a race. And let's look at the cube. All right, so I I engineered a position. This is a very close take, very narrow take. Now you're gonna, you're gonna look at this winning chance and you're gonna say, wait a minute, how come with twenty-one point six percent? I thought the take point was twenty-five percent. All right, well, well, then why is this a take?
Because of the doubles?
What's the meaning of that? It's because of cube value. Because white would have the opportunity to uh uh re-cube later. And so again, this is something I want to ignore for now, but now let's put this in match play. Now I have it three away, three away. We are expecting this should be a big pass. And it is. Okay, so how are you supposed to use this information? You're just supposed to remember that when you're at three away, three away, you should be, you should be pushing yourself in the direction of passing the cubes that you would have taken before. Okay? All right, now I want to show a different score. Alright, now I want to show a different score. Uh let's do.
Okay.
What is the take point? At five away, five away. Okay, so let's go through the calculation again, using our match equity table. Take and win. What are we gonna be? We're gonna be four away, no, sorry, we're gonna be three away, five away, and what is that?
Sixty five.
Sixty five percent, pass. Five away, four away.
Fifty seven, yeah.
Forty three.
Oh, sorry, my bad, forty three, yes, the.
Five away, three away. This is thirty five percent. Okay. What's our gain?
Twenty two.
Twenty two percent. What's our risk?
Seven percent. Wait, yeah, eight.
Eight. Take point is equal to eight divided by eight plus twenty two. This is eight over thirty, oh oh, we need some math now.
Twenty seven percent.
That's um. Twenty eight percent or something?
Twenty seven.
Yeah.
Concerned we did something. Do we, do we have all the numbers in here right? Twenty two, eight over thirty. Okay, what did we say, twenty seven percent?
Yep.
Something's fishy. Feel like we've done something wrong.
It seems to make sense to me that an even match with longer to go would get closer to that twenty five percent point. Intuitively, that seems.
Let me make sure I've got the match equity numbers correct in there, fifty. Uh six five, yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, I have everything in here right. Forty three, okay, and this is eight. Yeah, something's weird, cuz this number should be lower. Okay, we've we've done something weird.
Uh I think it's, it's, it is, wait, it's the risk divided by risk plus gain, yeah, right, no, no, that's correct, okay, that's correct. Alright, weird.
How significant is it, is the difference between this, what you're expecting? Could it be roundoffs in your table?
I don't think so, because I think the correct number should be around twenty four percent, so I don't know why we're getting twenty seven.
Uh maybe you're just misremembering, Jason, and it is supposed to be twenty seven.
No, because I I opened up my match equity table and I'm looking at it to more decimal points. Yeah, okay, this is weird. So alright, I don't know what's going on here. Um well, let me, let me show you what what I'm thinking about, like, here is the position that was at three away, three away was a. Was a big pass, so now our, we're saying that the take point is still above money, but if we put this in at five away, five away. It's a take. Okay, uh it's weird, we've done something wrong with the calculation, I'm I'm afraid.
That stuff.
Okay, um I'm gonna have to, I'll have to double check something on that. I don't know what's going on. Let's, let's do another one.
Um Jason, but it kind of makes sense to me that it would be above twenty five and not below. Because imagine like you keep increasing the, the the numbers of the players. Instead of five away, you go eight away, then eleven away versus eleven away, fifteen away, fifteen away. It becomes closer and closer to a pure money game, because their score becomes so. Like distant from the score where you have to win, that it basically becomes like a money game, right?
That's true when the, that's true when the scores are very big, but what uh what happens at five away is different. And the reason is, in general, you don't like your opponent getting to four away. Being at four away is a, is is a nice place to be. Because gammons on a two cube will win the match for you perfectly.
Oh, that, I see, there's um those kinds of effects, I get.
Look at your extreme gammon setup again, I I think it looked like a six away from my monitor.
And it was, it's five.
Well, now it's five.
Uh Jason, is there any way you can increase your volume? I hear you very faintly and. All my systems are the highest volume.
How am I doing now?
I hear you fine.
Okay, let's do it, let's do one with uh not at a symmetric score. What is the take point at five away? Two away. Okay, now, so we're five away and we're trying to figure out our take point. Now, one thing to keep in mind is, it, I told you that we're ignoring the value of of re-cubes. Except I'm not so sure we should ignore it here, because if I'm five away and I take a cube. I'm always going to immediately redouble the four, right? So I think now I'm gonna say, take and win, I'm gonna be one away, two away. Sixty eight percent. Pass. What am I gonna be? Five away, one away.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Take and lose?
Zero.
Zero, I lost the match. Okay, so what's my gain?
Fifty two and sixteen or sixty eight.
Sixteen. I guess I could just do, take point is equal to sixteen divided by sixty eight. What is sixteen divided by sixty eight?
Twenty three and a half.
How do you do that, Rick?
Oh, uh Jason, I just remembered, you can check the take point for any score in XG itself.
Yes, I know, that's why I know we've done something wrong up here.
Okay, alright.
It 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 may be what Rick was saying, it may be rounding error, I haven't checked that. Okay, Rick, how how would you do this? How do you, how do you do this sort of calculation?
Well, if I didn't have a calculator in my hand.
Which you're not allowed to have when you're playing backgammon.
I would just look at it, sixty eight's about two, a little over two thirds, so I would just do an approximation that way. Uh three halves, instead of dividing by two thirds, si- three halves of sixteen is twenty four round down, and that would get it to me.
Uh I would, I would do that sixteen plus four is uh sixty four, so that would be twenty five percent. Uh cuz you had to multiply that four. Yeah, so it's slightly different from twenty five percent.
So it's a little bit smaller than twenty five percent, right?
Yeah.
Uh huh, yeah.
Twenty three, twenty four percent. Here's another way to do it. If I simplify this fraction by dividing top and the bottom by two, I get eight over thirty four. And now if I multiply the top and the bottom by three, I get twenty four over one oh two.
Hmm, that that's basically what I was saying, just.
Yeah, that's basically what you're saying. So it's really close to twenty four percent. So when you're five away and your opponent is two away. This is saying that you should be slightly more likely to take a cube, but not a lot, right? I think a lot of people see themselves at five away, two away and say, okay, I'm just gonna gobble up these cubes. Not really true. Okay, let's do um. Okay, here's what I wanna do. We only have a little bit of time left, and the problem that I wanna look at. It's gonna take uh some calculation. Okay. Alright, here is the position. Okay. So we're the red checkers, so the red player is going to double. And the white checkers has to decide whether they wanna take or pass. Okay? Now, let's. Okay, so red has two checkers on two point. White has checker on two and four. Maybe I can. I know what I'll do. I'll take a screenshot. And put it in here. Okay, good. I don't need it to be this big. Okay, alright, so red is five away. White is two away. Should white take is the question that I I want to see if we can answer. And we've got fifteen minutes, can we do this in fifteen minutes? Okay.
So you're assumed that red would double?
Yeah, let's assume red is doubling. Let's just figure out, should white take? Okay?
Um Stephen, I think the position you're referring to, the reference one, the two checkers from red are in the one point and not the two point. So so red is worse off here than the reference position, actually.
Red clears on their first roll on anything that doesn't have a one. Except double ones also does it, so there are ten bad rolls.
Alright, so hang on, so before we go through that, there are two things we need to calculate. White's winning chances. White's take point. And let's do them in that order. So Rick, you're you're about to start with the winning chances.
Right, so for white to win, first they need a chance. And that happens on ten out of thirty six rolls by red.
Okay, so there are, there are ten bad rolls for red, right? Anyone except double ones.
Right, except then white's not clear even then.
Okay.
Although the.
What are white's chances of bearing off those two checkers, and they have to do it in one shot, right?
Right, you're overregulates, and here is.
Yeah, he he wa- white would lose with a number of rolls.
Anyone or a three two. And so there are thirteen.
And double one as well.
But any, anyone at all, which is eleven, and a three two.
So there's.
Oh yeah, three two as well, yeah.
Okay, so that's thirteen bad rolls. So.
Thirteen, isn't it seven? Two one.
What, it's eleven ones.
One.
Eleven ones and a three two.
So thirteen bad rolls, is that right?
Yes, so twenty three good rolls.
Double ones wouldn't work either.
That's right, all ones, so eleven of them, and two three also doesn't work. So white's winning chances are two hundred and thirty divided by, what's thirty six times thirty six?
Twelve ninety six.
Which is the same as the slide-o code that we use.
Slide-o code, yes.
We've come around full circle. Okay, now can we estimate this number as a percentage?
Uh it's um well under twenty percent.
Okay, twelve ninety six is pretty close to thirteen hundred, so let's, let's go with this. That's twenty three.
I would say fifteen percent.
So if it was two hundred and fifty times five would be uh one thousand two hundred and fifty, which is close. So I think you need like. Uh a little bit more like, wow, so it would be five and a half for two hundred and thirty, I would say, so.
Stephen put in the chat seventeen point seven. Stephen, are you confident in that? Seems like it's about right. Okay, this is, this is an approximation, right? It's not, it's pretty close. Okay, shall we calculate white's take point? Oh, Stephen, you cheated, he's got his calculator. Okay, let's do white's take point, alright, because we have to know what the take point is to determine if white should take. Okay, so ordinarily, when you have seventeen percent winning chances. Uh you're not really gonna wanna take that cube, right? That's, that's really low, but let's check it at this score. Okay, alright.
This one we just did.
No, it's, no, cuz this is the other way around, so this is white's take point, it, white is two away, five away. It's, it's. Okay, alright, let's say white takes and win. Where are they? Remember, white is two away.
So that's a hundred percent.
Yeah, they won the match. Okay, pass. If they pass, they're gonna be two away, four away.
What is that? Sixty seven percent.
Eight seven percent. Take and lose?
Hmm.
Forty percent, uh sixty percent.
Two away.
Three away.
Two away, three away, yeah. Uh, alright, forty percent?
No, they're, they're still ahead, so it's sixty.
Oh, sixty, sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, what what's the gain?
Gain is uh thirty uh three percent.
What's the risk?
Risk is seven percent.
Take point equals seven over seven plus thirty three. Equals seven over forty? Ooh, that doesn't look too bad to try to estimate.
About one seventh, but.
Seventeen and a half.
Ahaha, that's right, seventeen point five. Alright, now, the cheating that Stephen did matters now, because we would need to know what this number is a little bit more exactly. Can't use a calculator. Right, you can't even write anything down. Alright, assuming this number is correct, what's the answer?
Take.
Take. Uh Stephen says impossible over the board. I disagree. I think I could do something like this over the board. I think it's definitely possible. I did one the other day where I, I I calculated my winning chances over the board. And I had to do some fraction like this out of one thousand two hundred and ninety six. And I got my winning chances down to one decimal place like this. How can I do that? It's because I I practiced this sort of thing. I've, I've tried doing it. And I said, okay, I need to try, I need some shortcuts for how can I compute uh a probability. A a percentage when I'm dividing by one thousand two hundred and ninety six. Okay, so we said take, right? Okay, let's see. Alright, so white is two away, five away, okay, let's see. Yeah. Double and a very close take, because the take point was a little bit lower than this winning chance. And you wouldn't know that unless you knew what the take point was, right? You'd have to know that that take point is around seventeen percent. Okay, why is the take point so low at this score?
Cuz if you take uh and they win a simple match, like a single match without gammons already, they already win the match. So you're giving them too, too much uh. Benefits by taking the cube. You think you make them win the match instantly, they win the this, this one.
Okay, I have a slightly different explanation. I I I don't think that's, any of that's wrong.
Sorry, sorry, no, no, that then doesn't make sense, because then the the take point would be higher than twenty five percent, and now it's lower. Yeah, my bad, yeah.
Okay. Okay, to finish this up, I think the main reason that this take point is so low. Is because when you pass, you let your opponent get to four away, two away. Four away, two away is a miracle score. It is the most unusual score in backgammon. I love playing from behind at four away, two away, because I get to put a ton of pressure on my opponents. With some really juicy cubes.
Okay, and when, when I just answered, just now, I was thinking white was five away instead of two away, so I was thinking white was trailing, my bad. So com- completely ignore my, what I said.
What's missing in all of this? Okay, so we talked about some of this, gammons, we haven't talked about this at all. Gammons are missing, re-cube big. That's missing in all this. We also haven't really talked about the other side of the coin, which is. Uh when can you double? Okay, so there's a, there's a similar calculation you can make about the minimum doubling point. Which is useful often in last roll situations uh for money. This is fifty percent. It doesn't mean that you can double um when you're above fifty percent. But it does mean that if in a last roll position, if this is the, gonna be the end of the game, if you have more than fifty percent, then you can double.
Um Jason, why do you want to ignore the re-cube big so much? Uh is it because it's not always three percent like it is for money games?
That's right, it's not always three percent.
Oh, fuck, okay.
And what it, what it depends on is what is the take point going to be on the redouble.
Oh.
See, for money, the take points are all twenty five percent, but with match play, it gets more complicated than that. See, for money, the take points are all twenty-five percent, but with match play, it gets more complicated than that. Um. Four away, three away is a score where this matters a lot. I ran into that in a match in Charlotte a few months ago. Um, so the, these can get be, be pretty complicated. Um, the most important thing to factor in here is gammons. Um, and I think if we do this again, I, I, I probably wanna talk about how, uh, gammons can be factored into this. And so the thing that you want to compute is something called the gammon price. The next thing to compute. And the last thing I'll do is I'll share with you real quick. I have, I have done all these calculations, not by hand, but by computer. And I've created like tables of take points, two cube take points, four cube take points, eight cube take points. And then gammon prices, so I've created a bunch of tables for myself, and I've highlighted them. So that I can see some trends in here, um, and they're, they're all very interesting to see. So for instance, when your opponent is four away, often your take point is a little bit higher. When your opponent is five away, your take point is a little bit lower. So there's some.
Jason, how did you come up with all these numbers that you plugged into this chart?
Um, well, I wrote a, I wrote a computer program that does the risk over risk plus gain, and I did it for, for everything. And then I, I imported it into a spreadsheet.
Of course you did.
So, there was, there was a lot of, there was a lot of work that went into this. Um, I, I wrote a program in Python that, that did all this stuff. Uh.
I need to ask if he was nominally working at the time.
Sorry, what'd you say, Rick?
If you are nominally working at the time.
Uh, I'm always working, it's just, am I doing something useful for my employer or not, is, is the real question. Alright, well, we're pretty much out of time, we got five minutes to go. Um, I'm desperate now to go back and find out what happened with the five away, five away calculation. I know that take point was, was not right. Um, let me stop the recording real quick.
Jason, thanks for making us feel really, really dumb. At least I feel dumb.
Well, I, I'm, I don't, not here to try to make people feel dumb, I just, you know, this is, backgammon is a very deep game. You can learn on, learn about it at lots of different levels. And what I'm showing you now is a level that's really deep, you know, you don't have to learn all this stuff to play a decent game of backgammon. But if you wanna play it at a high level, this stuff, I think is really indispensable. Okay, thanks for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for September third, twenty twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study sessions or our tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com.